Aloha and welcome to the Senate Committee on Energy, Economic Development and Tourism 1pm Joint Hearing. Three or four agendas and we'll recess briefly for decision making. First, let me begin with a housekeeping announcement. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at any outstanding business at 1pm on Tuesday, February 14, 2020. And we'll reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 1pm on Tuesday, February 14, in this room, 229, and a public notice will be posted on the legislature website. Please note that we have a time limit of one minute per testifier and I plan to strictly enforce. First up, we have Senate Bill 781 relating to renewable energy.
Not present on Zoom Chair.
Excuse me?
What? Not present on Zoom?
Okay, okay. Senate Bill 781, first up was Chief Energy Officer Mark Glick. You said not present on Zoom. Oh, no, there we have, okay, in person.
Stand on our written testimony with comments.
Thank you. Second up, Lauren Zerbal from Hawaii Food Industry Association.
Thank you Chair, Lauren Zerbal, on behalf of Hawaii Food Industry Association. We're in strong support of this measure. It's actually one of our priority issues this year. A lot of our members are having issues getting their permitting approved for solar projects or other renewable projects. So this measure would really help our members become more sustainable and resilient. Thank you very much for the African Union testimony.
Thank you. Next up, Solar Energy Association.
Aloha Chairs Decoy and McKelvey, Vice Chairs and members of the committee. I'm Rocky Mole with the Hawaii Solar Energy Association. I stand in writ, in, stand on my testimony in strong support of this measure and I'm here to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Sherry Polak testifying for 350 Hawaii on Zoom.
Aloha Chairs, Vice Chairs and Members of the Committee. My name is Sherry with 350 Hawaii. Want to thank you so much for scheduling this important bill. We stand on our written testimony and I just want to highlight a couple of points quickly. This bill is a game changer. It addresses a critical issue in our state that has reached the level of becoming dire and that's permitting and the extreme backlog that exists. There is story after story of families waiting up to a year or more for a single family permit, essentially a retrofit for a small project and that's completely unacceptable. Families want to do what's right for the environment and pass on a stable climate to their children. They also want to save on their electric bills. This permitting law jam is preventing that and the situation is becoming completely unacceptable and must be remedied. This bill will do that and it'll do it safely and everyone will benefit. In particular, we'll be able to take advantage of the solar app. It's already had immense success in jurisdictions. It's already been adopted in. Another part of this bill updates law in the book that hasn't been updated since 1979. That, that's reasonable to expect a law updated in 19, not since 1989 to be updated. It's completely reasonable.
Thank you, Sherry. Your time is up and we have your written testimony. Thank you. Next up, Noilani Derrickson testifying for Tesla in support. So I have numerous people in support. I have the next up testifying in opposition, American Council of Engineering Companies on Zoom.
Present on Zoom Chair.
He said present.
I guess he said present too, but he says not present.
Not present on Zoom.
I'm present. Okay. Okay, Opposition, AI, Hawaii State Council. Anyone else in the room wanting to testify? Please state your name.
Aloha, my name is Dave Monix and with our Revolution Hawaii. Thank you so much for hearing this bill. As has already been said and stated by the solar industry that people will have to wait up to like eight months, even to a year to get their permits. This app will change everything and they'll be able to get their permits within a day. It's already working successfully in other parts of the country. It costs us nothing. It's a win-win for everyone. So I just, please encourage you all. We have a climate crisis happening and we've all decided that we have to do something about it. This is going to help that happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify?
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committees. My name is Ted Boland. I'm with the Climate Protectors Hawaii and we are in strong support of this bill. I guess I don't have too much to add what's already been said. It's good for the climate. It's good for the people who want to put solar in their house. It'll save them money and it'll be good for the state. So please pass this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, questions for the committee? Seeing none, Chief Energy Officer. So.
Maria Tani and Tamara Glah.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So question, can the requirements in this bill be implemented upon the bill's approval?
It could be a question for the. We would have to check with the counties on, on that.
So, so anyway, just so you know, I did check with one of the counties because all four of them did not read on it and they don't seem to have a problem with it. Okay, no, thank you. And then I'm sorry, missed two people on Zoom. Okay, thank you. Thank you. So I don't know who we have on Zoom, but whoever's on Zoom.
Hi. Good afternoon Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. My name is Sheena Choi, Executive Officer with the Board of Professional Engineers, Architects, Surveyors and Landscape Architects. We would like to stand on our written testimony and limit our comments and concerns to Section 4 of this bill. Thank you.
Aloha. Hi, I'm Beth Amaro with KIUC, Kauai Island Utility Cooperative. Good afternoon Chairs, Vice Chairs and Members of the Committee. We stand on our written testimony and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 1261 relating to renewable energy. First up, Do Tax.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. My name is Brian Davidson. I'm with the Department of Taxation. We stand on our comments that we provided and I'm here for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Next, next, uh, Solar Energy Association of Hawaii on Zoom.
Aloha Chair and Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Rocky Mole with the Hawaii Solar Energy Association. I stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up on Zoom, Sherry Polak for testifying for 350 Hawaii.
Aloha Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. I stand on our written testimony. I would just like to highlight a couple of points. This bill gives an opportunity for the state to lead by example in our efforts to address the climate crisis. We must move off of fossil fuels and solar is one of the most effective ways to do that. It'll have upfront costs, but those will be made back quickly through electric bill savings. So bottom line, we're going to be saving taxpayers money and at the same time, we'll be able to save the planet from the greenhouse gas emissions. It will also probably save lives with the stronger hurricane seasons we're having as a result of global warming. It's just a matter of time before the grid gets knocked out after a disaster. And when that happens, if state government agencies have solar plus storage, particularly first responders, they're going to be able to respond and help us. So this will enable them to do their jobs. So bottom line, this bill is about saving money, saving the planet and saving lives. So please pass this bill so we can all sleep a little better at night.
Thank you. Next up, Revolution Hawaii on Zoom. Okay, you're here. Okay, in person. Thank you.
Yes, I just read the same thing, but we are in a climate crisis and by putting solar and battery storage on our state buildings, we'll be resilient and ready for anything. We had Hurricane Aniki here and Hurricane Maria in Puerto Rico and everything was wiped out. In Puerto Rico locally, they, one of their fire stations had battery storage and PV on their roof and they were, they were able to keep going where other, everybody else is shut down. So this is vital. It'll save lives and it's, it's a win-win for our whole community. Thank you so much for hearing my testimony.
Thank you. Next up, Hawaii Climate Action Coalition in support. Again, numerous support for this bill. Anybody in the room wishing to testify on behalf of?
Thank you again Chair, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees. Ted Boland for the Climate Protectors Hawaii. Like the last bill, this bill is a really good bill that would help in various ways. As, as the previous testifiers have said, it's, it's going to help distribute energy around. It's going to make us more resilient when we have storms and it's going to save people money, including taxpayers. So let's, let's put some of this on fire stations and police stations so that we have some resiliency. This is a good bill. Please support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to testify? Sure. Sorry.
Chairs, Vice Chairs, I apologize for our late written testimony that we submitted regarding this measure. We provided our written comments on the measure. Generally, it's in support of the measure. We're just concerned about the amount of funding that might be required for us to, for DAGs to carry out its portion of the requirements contained in the measure. And that's all, Chair. Thank you.
Can you state your name?
Well, I'm so sorry. Keith Regan, Comptroller for the Department of Accounting and General Services.
Thanks Keith. Anybody else? Seeing none, Members, any questions? Keith, can you come back please? So Keith, if we were to count the number of state facilities, it would likely be in the thousands. So can, can the requirements in this bill be implemented and how much would it cost?
Yeah, that's a great question. We've asked our team to take a look at that. We're in the process of putting those numbers together for you and we'll forward that to the committee. Yeah, it's a significant undertaking for us, but it's something that's important. We do agree with the intent of the bill that we do need to implement and put these types of distributed energy systems on our facilities.
Real quickly, are there a possibility and availability of federal funds that could be used, especially with DOD-related facilities to help fund this measure?
Yeah, I do believe Chair that there are some grants that are available. In fact, we've looked at some of the hardening grants that they have that provide for that type of funding and support from federal level. So yes, I do believe there are. I don't have the exact number or you know what's available at this point in time, but I, I do know that there are specific grants out there available.
Okay, yeah, we also, the Appropriations Bill is being worked on right now.
Yep.
There might be some.
For that type of funding and support from federal level. So yes, I do believe there are. I don't have the exact number or you know what's available at this point in time, but I, I do know that there are specific grants out there available.
Okay, yeah, we also, the Appropriations Bill is being worked on right now. There might be some programmatic. Maybe when your team does their assessment, if you help the committees by identifying these potential federal funds to do this build out, that'd be great.
Definitely. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Can you get back to us on those numbers?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, are we serious for decision making? Okay, Senate Bill 781 relating to renewable energy will be passing with amendments. Technical non-substantive amendments needed for clarity of consistency. I'll be taking the KIUC amendment, amending Section 196BA to by deleting installed or and adding, including an executive interconnection agreement with applicable electric utility and defective, and a defective date of January 6, 2050 and reflections in the committee report on concerns raised on Section 4. Any discussion?
I have a, I have some reservations with respect to the self-certification. You know, the electrical and architectural organizations, trade organizations did raise some concerns, but I am sure that this can be worked out over time.
Yeah, and that's what's going to be in the committee report.
Yeah, so I also will be holding with reservation for the same concern.
Yeah, and it will be reflective in the committee report.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing? Seeing none, Chair votes aye.
Members of EET are allowed to vote on Senate Bill 781. For those who've just come in, Chair's recommendation to pass this measure with amendments. Chair Decoy?
Aye.
I vote yes. Senator Pukunaga?
Reservations?
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Pugella?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations are about to be.
Thank you.
Okay, Committee, GVO Committee, same recommendation. Senator Appone?
Recommendation on SB 781 passed with amendments. Chair McKelvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair votes aye. Members of the Board of Enjura?
Reservations?
Senator Wakai?
Yes.
Senator Awah?
Vote.
Chair, the measure passes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next bill, Senate Bill 1261 relating to renewable energy. Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion?
The committee report, Chair, we just go ahead and make sure we allude to the cost figures that will be coming to us from DAGs. For the next committee, you can look at that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you Chair.
Okay, any other discussion?
I have a question. If we see a blank appropriation amount in SB 1261, are we, if we're going to have DAGs installed, should we fund them?
Yeah, that would help, yeah. We can, we can, yeah, we can look at it as a budget. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair, we please take the vote.
Pleasure. Noting the presence of all members, any opposition or reservations to the Chair's recommendation? We pass this measure as is. Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendations are about to be.
Thank you.
Thank you. GVO Committee, same recommendation as is.
Recommendation to pass SB 1261 as is for GVO of the Members' President of their Eno vote to reservation. Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Joint Committee on Higher Education and Committee on Energy, Economic Development and Tourism. This is the one-on-one agenda. So some of the housekeeping announcements, in the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 1, 3pm on Tuesday, February 14, in this room, 229, and a public notice will be posted for the legislature's website. Please note that you have a one-minute time limit per testifier, which we will enforce. And if for any reason we get some technical difficulties, we may have to move on due to time limitations. With that, we will start with our first agenda item, Senate Bill 1510 relating to the University of Hawaii Astronomy and Engineering and Instrumentation. This established a center for design, development and fabrication of astronomical instruments within the University of Hawaii, appropriates funds for the center's planning and design and 10 full-time equivalent faculty positions within the center. And here to testify, we have Dr. Basile Cermon, Vice President for Research and Innovation. But you don't want to make a case for your bill. Why it's needed? Why do you need 10 positions? I mean, we can move on. It's great for me. I saw the public knows what.
Aloha, I'm Doug Simons, the Director of UH Institute for Astronomy. The bill broadly is intended to create basically a center of excellence for instrumentation development. Two parts to it. One is to add faculty that will be shared between the College of Engineering, Institute for Astronomy, UH Hilo, and they would be tasked with design work and importantly, education for students interested in engineering applications, high-tech applications. The other part is to do a design study or a new addition to the building at IFA Hilo to ultimately house this new center.
Right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, Miles Yoshioka testifying for Hawaii Island Chamber of Commerce. Are you here? No? Okay, Christian Wong testifying for Hawaii Science and Technology, also in support. Wendy LaRose testifying for Kona Kohala Chamber of Commerce in support on Zoom. Wendy, hi, are you here?
Yes, I'm here. Yes. Aloha Chair Decoy and the Senate Committee on Energy, Economic Development and Tourism, and Chair Kim and the Senate Committee on Higher Education. I'm Wendy LaRose, the President and CEO of the Kona Kohala Chamber of Commerce located on Hawaii Island. Our chamber supports Senate Bill 1510. Since our founding in 1968, the Kona Kohala Chamber has worked to enhance the quality of life for our community through a strong, sustainable economy on Hawaii Island. With 440 member businesses and organizations, our chamber strongly supports the astronomy industry. It makes perfect sense to establish a center for design, development and fabrication of astronomical instruments within the University of Hawaii. This commitment will enhance cross-discipline programs between the UH Institute for Astronomy, UH Hilo and UH Manoa, as well as build the local workforce in an industry that diversifies our economy and provides good-paying jobs. We ask that legislators please pass SB 1510. Mahalo for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you Wendy. And we have Jean Gabriel Okubie, Director, testifying for Mauna Kea Observatories.
Aloha Chairs, Vice Chairs and Members of the Committees. I'm Jean Gabriel Okubie, Executive Director of the Canada France Hawaii Telescope, speaking on behalf of the Directors of the Mauna Kea Observatories who submitted handwritten testimony. As representatives of Mauna Kea Observatories, we believe that this proposal would be instrumental in supporting the long-term and world-leading success of Hawaii astronomy. More importantly, we believe that this proposal is important to create a robust, high-tech workforce pipeline for local talent to pursue industry-leading career paths right here on Big Island and to strengthen the diversity of the state's economy as a whole. We stand ready to collaborate with all the parties involved with this proposal in support of the students and faculty who will participate to the success of the center. Mahalo for the opportunity to support SB 1510.
Thank you very much. We have 11 others who have signed up to testify. They said they're not going to be here, but is there anyone here in the room that have signed up? Or anyone here in the room who did not sign up and feel moved that they would like to come and testify? Anybody? Hearing none, Members, we are open to questions. I have questions of the Cermons. Mr. Moroka, maybe?
Good afternoon Chair.
Good afternoon Chair. Just as a background, when we were visiting Mauna Kea for the Mauna Kea bill, ran into students in Hilo who were wanting to be engineers, wanting to get in the program, but they had to go to Honolulu to get their degree. And I was just curious as to why there were no engineering program on the Big Island to support our Mauna Kea and to support our astronomy program at the University of Hawaii. Can you share with us why it's taken this long? And no wonder why there's not Hawaiians or maybe limited to Hawaiians in the whole program over 50 years?
Can I leave that up to Brennan, since he's been working with the Institute for Astronomy and UH Hilo for a year now?
Sure, thank you. Brennan Moroka, the Dean for the College of Engineering and the University of Hawaii Manoa. Yes, Senator, there, there has been conversations over the years about having an engineering program at UH Hilo. You know, that precedes many of us here, but we have been working with UH Hilo on a transfer agreement so that students can participate in the first few years of their education at UH Hilo on the, on Hawaii Island and then transfer over to UH Manoa. Because right now, the only way to get an accredited engineering degree is at UH Manoa. We are the only accredited engineering program. So right now, that's the only way. But we are trying to facilitate that and we are supportive of the university establishing other types of engineering degree programs or programs in general at our other campuses, not just Manoa. And we do work with a lot of our community colleges in the other four years in terms of building a workforce with local engineers who can work up at the telescopes, both on Mauna Kea and on Haleakalaa. And Doug can elaborate more, but there is a very successful Akamai internship program for native Hawaiians, not just in engineering, but from, at least for my selfish purposes, engineering. When I visited the Daniel K. Einoid Solar Telescope on Haleakalaa, I was extremely surprised, pleasantly surprised to find that the majority of the engineers up there are our alums and are of Native Hawaiian descent. So I think that program, and now that that program is being transferred to IFA, I think we can put that on steroids and, and have many more of our local engineers working up at the telescopes. High, good-paying jobs and being able to stay home.
Okay, because I'm, you know, surprised that we established, or UH established a school of pharmacy and yet we, you know, less enrollment, down 50%, not really have a lot of jobs. Yet we have lingered, or UH has lingered in getting us engineering programs up on the Big Island where the jobs are. And so is there enough room on the campus to house the engineering department at this point?
I mean, I would have to defer on UH Hilo or at UH Manoa?
No, Hilo, because this is where the program will be, right? How many students will you be able to handle with this measure?
That I would defer to Doug in terms of the expansion of IFA's facilities.
Yeah, so with 10 faculty, each of, assuming each of them have some teaching responsibility, I would expect we could easily tolerate or support, you know, 100, 200-type engineering students when we actually come up to full speed. It's got to be dispersed between various fields like optics, advanced computer skills, cryogenics. These are the types of engineering applications that are unique to astronomy that aren't necessarily as widely available in terms of education in the college system.
How long will it take you to gear up? And I know the positions and the money will take a while. So as we get into finance, ways and means to look at when we would have to improve these full-time positions as well as the funding?
Yeah, I think we've requested money for the next FY, the next couple of FYs to start the whole program. So it's a function of how fast we can recruit and build up the team. I'm not worried about lack of space immediately to be able to house them. They'll be welcome at the Institute for Astronomy. We have the Chancellor from UH Hilo as well and College of Engineering. So I don't think that's going to be the limiting factor.
Can get a more definitive as to when the startups, when the funds, because of course we may not have to do the full funding for the first year if you're not, you know, maybe have to the half. So you can get back to us, but if I just get to ways and means?
We'll do that. And I want to add that, I don't want to go get ahead of ourselves, but this is a great opportunity to create the integrated systems engineering program and maybe a credit at UH Hilo. And that is not going to happen tomorrow in two years, but long-term plan, that would be fantastic for us.
Members, any questions?
Thank you. I want to look at the other part of this bill, which appropriates $2 million for the design and planning for astronomical instrumentation facility within the UH, which I think is a really neat idea, but which also starts getting into what the private sector could be doing, right? You're going to build stuff that some company out there could have built it and charged for. Could we somehow develop the facility as a public-private partnership somehow? So private sector helps pay for some of your, your needs. And I imagine in the fabrication world and astronomy, the instrumentation and machinery always is changing and I don't think you want to be coming to us constantly for money, but a public-private partnership, to me, would make sense for that component of this program.
I think that's a great idea. Part of the, the design study for the building involves interacting with the other observatories to look forward in terms of the technologies that are needed, but also engage in the local business community, the high-tech community. There's a well-established one in Piccolon Maui right now with the aerospace industry. So absolutely, I'd really like to explore that through that, that same design study for the new facility.
And Senator, there's many opportunities or synergies happening with both, not just the private sector, but with Department of Defense as well, the existence of. the existence of Space Force and their increased presence here in Hawaii. So and again, this is, I do want to just elaborate that this isn't just about astronomy in terms of the engineering aspects. It really touches the numerous different disciplines within engineering, like mechanical or electrical engineering. Especially this facility, we would have what's called advanced manufacturing, so we can do rapid prototyping or creation of new or development of new instrumentation for the observatories when they're just kind of one-offs, where it might be more expensive to do elsewhere at a private sector where an academic institution can do these a little bit faster and a little bit cheaper.
So would you be open to us perhaps amending this measure so that if we put up the $2 million of state funding, that we require some type of private sector match?
I'm very much open to exploring that. I can't promise that we can match it at this point.
No, no, I mean, so we would, if we see fit, would put up the $2 million, depending upon, let's say, the private sector coming up with a million dollars or whatever the percentage might be.
Or maybe not even limiting it to private sector, but other public sector institutions, like just in case Department of Defense would like to come in and support it.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, members, any other questions? Yes, Senator.
Thank you, Chair. Apparently, the testimonies weren't available online, so I don't have copies of the testimony. Can you explain what the ten faculty positions are?
So the bulk, I think they would be in support of developing in part some of the academic curriculum and teaching courses for the creation and development of a program as a part of a larger space science and engineering initiative. It would supplement some of our other existing programs meant to directly support the growth of engineering in the astronomy sector. And so some of them would be housed at UH Manoa and teaching our primary engineering curriculum and programs. Some would be housed at the University of Hawaii at Hilo at IFA in helping to run that, the engineering center there and also helping to teach some of the courses that would be offered as a part of a pre-engineering program that currently does not exist, in part because there are no engineering faculty. And so these faculty there would help initiate the, at least the pre-engineering aspects of an engineering curriculum.
So some of the instruction is on Zoom by Zoom or are they flying in and out?
With the advent of online curriculum, we could do Zoom, but the intent is to have them teach students at the University of Hawaii at Hilo on campus so that they would be accessible to UH Hilo students, not just those who have to come to Manoa.
Okay, so but the faculty that has not yet been hired?
No.
Okay, but do you have, when are you going to, should this bill pass and you get the funding? How long is it going to take you to hire a faculty?
Normally, normally it would, we would start recruitments in the fall of twenty twenty-three. And then we would do onsite interviews in the spring of twenty twenty-four and they would typically start the fall semester of twenty twenty-four. So we would try and hire the bulk of them, as many as we could during that recruitment process.
And do they include grad students?
They, it would, it would include them bringing on grad students as a part of their responsibilities.
So it could be more than ten positions or?
The graduate students, hopefully they're going to come out of their startup funds, which we will provide for their external funding, which hopefully they will be able to attract. So that's, that's usually how we would do the bulk of graduate assistance.
Thank you. Members, any questions? I have a couple more. So thank you, Senator Kennedy, for bringing up these positions. Because is another reason why it's taken us so long to get an engineering program in Hilo that the professors in Manoa don't want to go to Hilo, don't want to teach in Hilo?
Well, I, I don't know the history of that part, but for our faculty at Manoa, I mean, they are assigned to UH Manoa and a part of our accredited programs. So I don't know. I mean, we could, we could offer them, we could offer teaching online instruction to some of the other campuses, but they would not necessarily be a part of a engineering degree program at another institution.
So how many will be housed at Manoa out of these ten? And why do they have to be at Manoa?
Well, right now, right now, the current vision was to have five of those ten housed at Manoa and five housed at UH Hilo.
Why?
Just in order to supplement some of the programs and curriculum that we're having to teach at Manoa, because it would be expanding our, our current curriculum beyond what we currently teach as a part of our, our.
So in order to do a program in Hilo, you need to have more people in Manoa to expand that program? I don't, doesn't?
No, well, this is, this is a part of a, I guess, a larger system vision of, or multi-campus vision of having a space science and engineering initiative. So some of it would be born here at or done at UH Manoa, where the primary engineering curriculum is taught and the research is done. And then, but then having the other five support directly on, on island in the engineering support center.
Okay, well, certainly I'm impressed by the fact that we hope that these members will be having their full workload and that we're not also substituting lecturers and grad assistants for those positions.
Absolutely.
That the students will get the benefit of having these professors actually.
Yes.
Okay, members, any other questions? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Senate Bill one five two zero relating to Hawaii Pacific Hydrogen Hub. First up, testifying interim Associate Vice President, University of Hawaii.
Aloha Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees. Joshua Kaakua with the University of Hawaii Community Colleges. We stand on our written testimony in support. I'm available to answer questions.
Thank you. Next up on Zoom, Mark Lick, Chief Energy Officer.
Not present on the table.
Thank you. I have others in support. Is there anyone else that want to testify sitting in the room? I'll see.
First, thank you. Chris Sana Yassu, DIBID Director, and we are working closely with the State Energy Office and Mark Lick and his team on this hydrogen hub. And so we will be in full support of this application. Thank you.
Members, any questions?
Yeah, Chris, what exactly does the hydrogen hub do?
Sure.
No, I asked him.
Most definitely. It is putting infrastructure together to provide hydrogen fuel sources. It's looking at, it is a hub based in Hawaii that we're putting our applications together or submit to the Department of Energy. Is one of the clean energy resources that we're looking as part of the state energy plan. So the hydrogen hub will be based in Hawaii, which is providing fuel, hydrogen fuel, resources, clean energy production. And it's an entire production of hydrogen as one of the clean energy renewable resources here.
About ten years ago, there was a hydrogen project out of DIBID delivered with eight million dollars, ten million dollars with Kohala. And we did a hydrogen investigation because it was awarded to the third bidder instead of the first bidder. Whatever happened with that program and the results of that program?
I am not aware of that. We can look at that and report that.
Yeah, you know, we embarked on these programs and we spent all this money and then I don't know what the results are. What, what happened to all that money and what did we do at hydrogen? Here we are, ten years later, and talking about a hydrogen hub. And then there's nobody in DIBID that knows what went on? You guys don't research these things before it's come before us on these measures?
Yeah, we can get that information back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Senator, question for Maria. So I was involved in the recent hydrogen hub, I can't remember what you call it, the coalition that you built. A lot of impressive individuals on that call, but this is asking for money to further that. And if I correct, recall correctly, that Hawaii's application for this is due in April. So if by chance, I think we're what, one of thirty-one that are vying for the eight or so hydrogen hubs? If we don't get past April, there's no necessity for us to fund any of this, correct?
We are hoping that by identifying the producers of hydrogen, the distributors, the users, you know, even if the federal, the application for the federal funding is not approved, if there is value in doing this, we believe there is, that there will be some continued effort, you know, with all this effort to figure out how it would work. It's, I think, going to be realized that some part of it can move forward. And if funding was available, that would make it more viable, so.
Senator, and thank you. And Senator, to add to your question, thank you for that, is as identifying hydrogen as one of our state energy, part of our state energy plan, there is room for private capital to provide hydrogen solutions here in Hawaii. So we're, we're very much gunning for the, the, you know, billion dollars with the five hundred million, with the five hundred million in Department of Energy matching. And if not successful, then we're still looking to work with the private capital bringing in from US and other areas for investing in hydrogen projects.
I certainly understand the value and the opportunities with hydrogen, but I'm just talking specifically about this bill. If perhaps we don't make it past April, I mean, I know that momentum still should continue if we're not designated as a hydrogen hub. But this bill says relating to the Hawaii Pacific Hydrogen Hub. So we fall out in April, there's no need to fund any of this because it wouldn't even, we wouldn't be pursuing a hydrogen hub. We'd be pursuing a hydrogen strategic plan or something different.
Fair point, yes.
And then Maria, I know you guys have already engaged a contractor to put the beginnings of the next rounds of applications together. How much are you paying that consultant?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't know. We can get that for you.
Because this one has a blank appropriation. Just wanted to understand, like, we're talking hundreds of thousands, we're talking millions of dollars?
Sorry, we can, we can see what we can, sure.
Okay, yeah, if you could tell us who the contractor is and how much you're currently paying that individual, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I want to clarify a question following.
Senator Alvaro.
The, the application to, for the federal program, it's due in April.
Yes, sir.
You won't know the results until after the end of session, right?
About September or so. I think they'll have questions and presentations before then, is my understanding of the process. And I think in September or so, we should have a response as to where we're at.
So if we pass this bill, you'll at least be prepared if you happen to be one of the selected. And if we don't pass it, then we have to wait another session?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Senator Vela.
As well as DIBID's efforts to leverage the private investment in developing this hydrogen.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
DIBID's efforts to leverage private investors to develop hydro.
Oh, hydrogen hub, thank you. So as part of the application process, we have a consortium that we issued an RFI for, and that was part of the consent paper. And so we have identified a lot of private industry, nonprofits and government entities to be part of the hydrogen hub application. If you're applying for five hundred million dollars in Department of Energy funds, you have to have a private match of that same amount, so one-to-one match. So we are engaging with a lot of partners to look at projects that are qualifying as hydrogen projects that then will be as a private capital match to the Department of Energy funds that are matching with that. So hope I answered that question.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Senator Kidani.
Thank you. Chris, so have you guys started any discussion with the university regarding the workforce development activities thus this week?
So if I could, we actually have an agreement with the University of Hawaii. They applied for and we were one of the participants in that application and they received federal funding. And so we are leading the clean energy and skilled trades portion of the Good Jobs Hawaii Initiative in the Energy Office. And so the hydrogen piece, of course, is part, is going to be part of that, Good Jobs Hawaii.
Well, I guess my concern is saying is going to be, so you have not started the discussion on that piece yet?
But we have, doing this. Yeah, we have started the energy, yeah. We have started the energy part of that. We are going to be convening the steering committee and hiring the person who will be doing the day-to-day work on that. It is just now getting started.
And Senator, thank you for that question. And the University of Hawaii through HNEI is a member of the consortium. And so I cannot answer for the hydrogen hub application per se for workforce development, but they are part of the consortium and we'll be working with them on that component as well for the application itself.
And one of the first steps is surveying the potential employers about what skills their employees need. You know, what are they looking for, for Hawaii's skills? And then developing the training and the services to make sure that Hawaii people have access to get those skills to do those jobs. So that's the first phase.
So when is the application actually due to?
April seventh.
Okay, so you basically have just a little over two months to submit this application.
Yes.
My concern is the discussions have not really started because you're still looking for members to sit on this task force or committee or whatever.
Well, the Good, the Good Jobs Hawaii is a separate, is a separate effort. And so even in the hydrogen hub application, if selected, there is a planning period of twelve to eighteen months when developing a detailed plan about what needs to happen, where and when.
Okay, but part of this bill is for DIBID to work with the university?
Yes.
So the university is part of this Good Jobs thing that you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm just asking, has the discussion started? I mean, you have two months.
Yeah.
The Good Jobs Hawaii is an application that the University of Hawaii led in cooperation with the State Energy Office and our Chamber of Commerce and other members. And it's something that we're very proud of. Hawaii was part of like a field of five hundred thirty applications and we were one of thirty-two selected. And so this was awarded in September of last year. So we're entering our second quarter of a three-year project. And I think we're well on our way with healthcare, we're developing in IT, but clean energy is a space that we have, we're conducting the employer analysis of the skills that they need. Because at community colleges, we want to make sure that we set up training that our employers want. And so we have been in discussions for about a year now. And so it is a timely, timely measure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Research for decision-making.
All the committee, Joint Committee on Economic Development, Energy, Economic Development, Tourism and Committee on Higher Education to order for recommendations for decisions, starting with Senate Bill fifteen ten. This relates to the astronomy engineering program in Hilo. The Chair recommends that we pass the measure as is. And when it gets to the Money Committee, we will look at the timing and the cost and et cetera on this measure. Members, any discussion? Not? Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill fifteen ten to pass unamended. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Pukunaga?
Aye.
Senator Keith Algaran?
Yes.
Senator Favela.
Aye.
This is adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Uh, Energy, Economic Development and Tourism, uh, same request, any discussion? Saying none, why should you take the vote?
My pleasure. Chair Decoy?
Aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to Senate Bill one-five-two-zero. Uh, Chair's recommendation is to amend the defective date and technical amendments clarifying language. Any discussion? Saying none, uh, but Chair, please take the vote.
Noting the presence of all members, any opposition or reservations to the Chair's recommendation, we pass this measure with amendments. Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
For Committee on Higher Education, same recommendation, pass with amendments affecting the date and tech, um, tech amendments. Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill fifteen-twenty to fire Ed, pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Agarant.
Aye.
Senator Favela.
Aye.
Members adopted, Madam Chair.
Uh, and with that, speed is adjourned. Lohai, and welcome to, uh, Committee Energy, Economic Development, Tourism, Joint Committee of one oh-three P M. Agenda, uh, in the likely, in the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties. The committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at one P M. On Tuesday, February fourteenth, this room, two to nine, and a public notice will be posted on this legislature website. Please note that we have a time limit of one minute. Chair. Yes. Thanks. Uh, so, first up. First up on, uh, the agenda. DBID.
Good afternoon, Chair, and Vice Chair and members of the committee. Uh, thanks for this opportunity to testify. We submitted, uh, comments. Uh, mostly, I think the only one I wanted to highlight is that, uh, I believe DBID Director was made an ex-official member of the board. And, um, but there's still twelve members of the board, uh, present. And so our requested amendment was to add a thirteenth member to the board, so thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, next up, uh, John DeFreeze, Hawaii Tourism Authority. Sure.
Loh, Chair, Vice Chair, members, Ilia Johnson, on behalf of John DeFreeze for the Hawaii Tourism Authority, he sends his loh to you all. Uh, mahal for this measure. We understand and appreciate the intent to offer some finality to board members' terms. Uh, we hope that this results in expedited appointment of their replacements. So that we don't get into a situation of not being able to meet core. And we do want to take this opportunity to thank and recognize our board members for the tireless volunteer service. Mahal to you.
Thank you. Next up, Cheryl. Uh, with comments, anybody else, uh, wanting to testify on this measure? Seeing none, uh, moving on, uh, members, any questions?
Yes, I do.
Uh, Senator Kim.
Thank you, um, HTA. So, uh, when you talk about expedited, you know there's a governor that sends the names down, if the governor don't send the name down, then we can't act.
Yes, Senator, understood.
And you're aware that the governor held over, uh, the Chair of HTA for three years. And refused to send a name down.
Yes.
So again, it's not with us, and that's why this measure, so that they will send the name down.
Yes, and to clarify my earlier comments, it's an appreciation of this measure to raise that awareness. About the importance of expeditiously nominating board members.
I hope you'll tell the House that because, um, they killed the measure last time, so, thank you.
Mahal, Senator.
Any, any other questions?
Yeah, for, um, DBID.
DBID.
So Mr. Sari Asu, you're asking that we increase the board members to thirteen and that you be a voting member, DBID Director be a voting member?
I believe, um, sorry, thank you, Chair, uh, I believe that. HTA, I'm sorry, for the Board of Directors, DBID was added as an ex-official member. Uh, at the last legislative session and that there's, uh, if there's twelve members right now. And that's something that we've, we're following up on with the Attorney General's Office. And I'm asked for an, an opinion with respect to, uh, DBID Director being ex-official member. But not being seated on the board because there's twelve existing members. I think that's something that we're requesting, if, if so chosen by the legislature and decided to add a thirteenth member. Then the DBID Director's ex-official would become the thirteenth member of the board.
Why, why do you think that DBID Director should be a part of the Board of Directors for the, um, HTA?
I believe that was the, um, intent of the legislature by adding.
Not a voting member?
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
Why should he be a voting member or she be a voting member on this board?
Understand, because as an ex-official member of the board, uh, it'd be best to have. Uh, just like other boards that I'm an ex-official member of, uh, HTDA, HHFDC and the like, HTDC. HGIA and the like, um, I am the, the designee or the director is a voting member. So I thought consistency would allow for voting membership of that, um, entity. But if it's the desire of the legislature not to include it as a voting member, then, uh, so be it.
I think the fact that you can already override them, override them as far as procurements and other areas. Um, that you would get two bites at the apple and to have you as an ex-official member. That we don't even confirm for HTA and we confirm you for DBID. To me, um, I would have serious problems with that, so thank you.
Thank you all. Any other questions? Uh, seeing none, uh, moving on to S B one-two-nine-six, first up, uh, Officer Planning.
Thank you, Chairs. Uh, Mary Alice Evans for Scott Glenn, the Director of the Office of Planning. Uh, we're standing on our testimony in strong support of this bill and available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, uh, DBID.
Uh, strong support as well, we stand on our testimony.
Thank you. Uh, Regina Gregory in Opposition. Uh, anybody in the room wishing to testify on this measure, seeing none, members, any questions?
Uh, yeah. So this is for two additional positions, correct?
That's correct, Chair.
Um, in the past, you've operated with how many?
Excuse me?
In the past, you operated with how many?
The Special Plans Branch has one.
Can you speak up?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The Special Plans Branch has one permanent position. And we currently have three, uh, temporary exempt positions that are funded with federal funds. So we only have one position, Chair.
Okay, and you're asking for two permanent positions.
Yes, please.
And that would be to then you, would the ten positions go away?
Uh, so the federal government, before it will designate, uh, the state of Hawaii as an economic development district. Requires that we demonstrate that we have professional staffing to support the Economic Development District Planning Organization. Which is also a requirement. The Economic Development Administration, which gives the state agencies and nonprofits. Uh, funding for projects, uh, is now directing most of their funding to these economic development districts. So Hawaii really needs to have one in order to be eligible for more federal funds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? Mary, I just, uh, just, sorry, just one question. So since we often need to compete with federal funding, what could the state lose if we did not create the Economic Planning Organization?
With the Economic Development Administration directing, oh, seventy percent of their grants. To economic development districts throughout the country. Uh, we will be less competitive than other areas of the country that have these economic development districts. So, uh, that will mean our applicants will have to work harder. To get federal funds for these projects, so that's, I think, the answer.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, moving on to Senate Bill nine-five-one relating to tax credit for research activities. First up, uh, Officer Planning. Uh, sorry, first up, uh, HTDC.
Chair, I'm all in your favor, saying HTDC, HT, it's, 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 it's.
Thank you. Uh, next up, uh, Department of Taxation.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members. Uh, my name's Brian Davidson, I'm, uh, here on behalf of the Department of Taxation. Uh, we submitted comments and we stand by those comments. If you have any questions, I'll be available.
Thank you. Uh, next up, uh, Director, uh, Matthew Sullivan, Director of Product Oceanet.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, uh, Matthew Sullivan, testifying on behalf of Oceanet. Uh, I'm a local boy who was born and raised here in Hawaii and like many other young people, went away, got educated. With the goal of coming back and, you know, starting a family, being a part of the community. It's been twenty years since I graduated high school, um, have a little bit of white hairs. Um, and I can say that I'm one of the few that made it back, not a lot of us did and most never will. It's my first year spending time getting to know some of you, um, policymakers. And, you know, I keep hearing that in the state, we talk a lot about economic diversification and we talk about sending the brain drain. Our local tech industry is one of the few industries that provides good jobs for locals so they can raise a family, support their kids, have a decent life. And the state earned the tax credit is one of the few public policies that supports the industry. So I'm testifying in support and request the committee, uh, consider the two changes that I've included in my written testimony to make it effective. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, perfect timing. Uh, next up, uh, testifying Makai Ocean Engineering in support. Others, it's, uh, three others in support and then Tax Foundation, we comments on Zoom.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair Decoy and members of the committee. This is Jade McMillan from the Tax Foundation of Hawaii, testifying on behalf of Tommy Amachika. We will stand on our written testimonies submitted on this measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions?
Yeah.
Senator Kim.
I have a testimony for Matt, so Matt, what, what is the amendments you're asking for?
Um, there were two requests, Senator, uh, extending the sunset date. Currently sunset's twenty twenty-four, requesting five-year extension to twenty-nine. And then the second was, um, tightening up the qualifying criteria. Last year, thirty-four companies applied, nine received it, and two out of the nine were mainline companies. So we're trying to make sure it's local companies that get this part.
Matt, how is, um, these tax credits over research, research activities? Um, do they relate anywhere to R C U H? Do you folks use R C U H for some of these or?
I don't believe so.
No, so it would be separate from anything that R C U H does as far as research?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, uh, no tax. Uh, what is the annual revenue impact of this income tax benefit? And how many taxpayers by year have qualified for this tax credit since inception?
That would be information that I would have to get to you at a later date. I would have to check with our research team.
Okay, can you get that to us?
I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask in the future, when you guys come, can you guys have some, if there's a, a tax implication? Can you guys be ready to tell us what that might be?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, recess for decision making. Okay, uh, Senate Bill one-one-nine-eight relating to Hawaii Tourism Authority. Uh, this bill we're gonna pass, oh, sorry, oh, yeah. This bill we're passing with amendments. Uh, I am going to amend section two-one-zero-B dash two. Be changing Board of Directors from twelve members to nine. Amending section B for changing six members to four members. That shall have knowledge and changing that no more than two from three members shall represent, be employed, buy or be under contract. To any sector of the industry. And amending E changing seven members to five members that shall constitute a quorum. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, Wester King, please take the vote.
My pleasure.
Oh, Chair, sorry. Okay, sorry, if you can, please take the vote.
Sure. Uh, Chair Decoy?
Aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to Senate Bill one-two-nine-six, uh, relating to designating Economic Development District. We will pass this with technical non-substantive amendments. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, but Chair, can you please take the vote?
Noting the presence of all members, any opposition or reservations to the Chair's recommendation, we pass this measure with amendments. Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill nine-five-one relating to a tax credit for research activities. Uh, we will be passing with amendments, noting amendments coming from Senate Bill four-four-three done. Amending the amount of tax credits to one million five hundred thousand. From two million five hundred thousand and a sunset date of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine. And require business to be registered to do business in Hawaii and occupy a business location and address in the state of Hawaii. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Wester King, please take the vote.
My pleasure. With the presence of all members, any opposition or reservations to the Chair's recommendation, we pass this measure with amendments. Having seen and heard none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, meeting adjourned. Yeah. Okay, last agenda, uh. Again, welcome to, uh, Senate Committee, uh, we have a triple committee, uh, agenda here. Uh, relating to obeisia, in the likely event, we abruptly end this due to technical difficulties. We'll reconvene Tuesday, February fourteen at one P M in this room, two to nine. Uh, first, oh, and we have a one minute, uh, per testifier. First bill up, Senate Bill one-one-nine-three, relate to obeisia. Uh, first testifier by Zoom, Attorney General. Oh, here.
Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee, Deputy Attorney General Elise Sami Mia. Department thanks you for the opportunity to provide these comments. Article seven, section four of the Hawaii State Constitution requires that grants be provided, um, at pursuant to standards provided by law. Um, initially, we don't see any standards and so we have offered some suggested amendments. And I'm also available to work with the committee or also available to answer any questions. Again, thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Uh, next up, DBID.
Chair, thank you. We submitted comments, we stand on our comments.
Chair, thank you, we submitted comments, we're standing on our comments, thank you.
Thank you, next up, Dylan or. In, not here, uh. I have, uh, many people in support, uh, one in opposition. Anybody else in our room wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, any questions? Well.
Who's here, anyone want to hear us?
Okay. Go ahead.
Much come up, Chair?
No, you.
So this, it's not like this is a new idea, I mean, we've tried to find other uses of those pieces ago. And money has been invested. Uh, and nothing is modeled, so why are we doing this again?
I don't. With our Business Development Support Branch.
Uh, Mark Ritchie, Branch Chief, uh, D B. Um, yeah, this isn't our bill, we just offered comments.
Dang it.
Mark. Yes, so. We talked with U H with C T A and apparently there's, uh, there's a website which we sort of looked at that talks about Albezia, an Albezia project. They've done some little bit of research, College of Engineering, C T A and then the School of Architecture. But there's not a lot of data or at least a report that I've seen available. That companies or nonprofits could sort of use as a model to, to sort of put something together. To try to just use Albezia for products to, and if the real intent is to, uh.
No, we have, we have, we have people that work with wood.
If Albezia was something that was feasible, don't you think they would have been using it? That, yes, I think there would be business people that already would have had that idea. I mean, apparently from my understanding, you'd have to do a lot of processing of the wood. You know, they tried sort of different things and we haven't seen anything.
We have a lot more valuable wood and yet we haven't developed a mill, we haven't developed a lot of things, so. What are we trying to do with this bill? I mean, you guys are from D B, so tell me, is this something that's gonna be useful?
Well, that's why we have offered comments is because if the real intent is to get rid of an invasive species and if that's the intent. Uh, you, you could go about that in different ways and we're not the, the department that actually, you know, was tasked with trying to get rid of invasive species.
I don't see any testimony from D O A.
I mean, maybe you're not in the business of that, but aren't you guys in the business of economic development? To try to put something together, what Senator D B Arron is saying, I mean, he said we've been talking about this forever, but. We never did even invest decades for our own manufacturing mills for, for anything like that. So I mean, you know, that's the kind of stuff that, I mean, isn't that something that it is in your guys' purview?
Well, what we would like to, what we sort of, uh, put in our comments is. This is supposed to be our grant program, so they want D B to be giving out money to either nonprofits or for-profit companies to start doing these things. But in our opinion, we wouldn't even know how to judge those proposals because we don't have a lot of the numbers. Available to how expensive it is to process this wood to make it into a real product. U H just done a little bit, but in talking to them, there's no major study, so we don't even have the numbers to see if this is even economically feasible at this point. And then the cost of actually building a mill, the type of equipment it takes to actually finish the product off. So there's just a lot of unanswered questions on this at this point for us.
So that's why in your comments, you were recommending first a technical study and then an economic feasibility study, is that correct?
Right.
Is it true that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, any other questions? Oh, Senator Wakai.
I, I'm trying to understand the value of this bill, uh, because this is something that I would think the private sector would be totally responsible for. Because it could be an outcome where we spend X number of dollars on this, finding this is a totally wasted effort for nothing, right? I mean, we're gonna use state funds to go explore an opportunity to, to turn Albezia into something sellable. When in fact, the private sector has never to this point found any value add to Albezia's. But we're gonna spend state monies to find out what we already know the private sector has not even figured out.
Right, I mean, one thing universities can do, and they do pretty well, is basic research, at least putting, at least putting information out there. So that a business can actually take it, put it into their business model and run the numbers and see if it makes sense. We don't even have a lot of the numbers of that basic research you can put out there. We just know it's a really difficult species to work with and it takes a lot of processing.
Okay, oh, you know, if we don't get this done by two thirty, this is done, oh, any other questions? Oh, Senator, okay, um.
Chair, just a quick comment.
Okay.
What do you want, just Big Island is working, I know the university's working on a, a test sawmill. With private industries, so I don't think this is the right way for this thing to be going.
Thank, thank you, uh, recess for decision making. Okay, uh, Senate Bill one one nine three, um. You know, after, uh, the discussion on this bill and I think, you know, stuff that we probably could look at and work through the interim. I am gonna defer this bill. Meeting adjourned.